I'll ping Brad.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor, are we going to start with Jill first?
We are. That's correct.
Okay, Nancy, would you make sure that Jill Goldschmidt has the ability to speak? Unmute her? There she is.
Hi Jill. Can you say something so we can?
Yes, I can. I was able to unmute myself, so. Technology did not defeat me. Yay!
Thank you for giving us some time this afternoon. It's beautiful.
Yeah, it's a beautiful day here. I bet it's beautiful there.
Very nice.
It is. It really is.
And it looks like we have everyone present, so I'm going to call the work session to order at 2:02. Today is July 12, 2023. And this is a council work session and is open to the public via Zoom. Because this is a work session, no public comment will be taken and no decisions will be made by the council. We want to welcome all of our citizens out there who are joining us and thank you for your commitment to our city. It looks like all councillors and city manager are present for the record. The purpose of this session is to receive an councillor, receive information on a council retreat that is being planned and also to discuss the planning commission's scope and bylaws. Before we begin though, I would like to acknowledge the receipt of a petition by a Mr. Richard Mastinack delivered to all council members on July 5. This petition is signed by 141 citizens and asks that, quote, "You give Manzanita electors the means, the ballot, to allow us to defend what we value most in our community." That's a small portion of what was on the petition. I have asked Mr. Mastinack or a representative to present the petition at the August 9 city council meeting, and I'm waiting to hear back on confirmation. So Linda, I think we're ready to.
Hey. I'm on, okay. So in December, actually the end of last year, before all of the new city councillor and mayor had been sworn in, we had the opportunity to have a retreat. And in that retreat, we talked about, you know, how we were going to work together. We wanted to build a collaborative relationship. And we also agreed at that time that it would be a good idea to revisit it in mid-year. So we had it, I think it was November or December. It was very productive. Over this last six months, we've had some glitches. We've had some ups and downs. And so it made it even more important that we get together to kind of reconvene and work on how we best work together. We also agreed that we would ask our legal counsel to help us identify someone so that they were more than likely outside of the area and not influenced by any of the activity that had gone on. We were very lucky. We were introduced to Jill Goldschmidt. She had Workplace Solutions Northwest, and she is with us today. Jill is a mediator, a neutral, a trainer, a coach. She consults with businesses and attorneys to develop strategies to resolve difficult situations where clarity, trust, and compassion is important. She has worked with large and small companies in the private and public sector, healthcare, higher education, among others. Jill works with groups guiding them to foster partnerships and collaboration for the teams to move forward productively. We're lucky to have, I'm delighted that we have Jill here with us today. She's going to talk a little bit about her process and her experience, and then we'll open it up to questions from the council. So Jill, you're on.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to come. I have not met everybody on the council, so very happy to meet you, or at least see your faces over Zoom. Let's put it that way. So I have been, I have had my own business here in Oregon more than 20 years. I've been a mediator probably 26, 27 years, something like that. And I've been a coach, I've coached, been a coach sort of effectively for 15 or 16 years. And I also do other things like Linda mentioned. I've served as an expert witness. I serve as a neutral. But in terms of the mediation conflict resolution work that I do, what I do when I work with the group is the first thing I do is I want to talk with every individual member in a confidential setting and ask them basically three questions. What, you know, what is going on that you're not happy about? What is, what would you like to see instead? And then third, let's talk about barriers to get from where we are to where we want to be. What are those barriers? And then I take all of that information from the whole group, which has been given to me confidentially as to the, you know, by the individuals, and I synthesize it into a summary, which does not point to any individual, but which, you know, gives what I think is a pretty good description of what people are telling me is an issue. And, you know, quite often, people, even people who are sometimes in conflict will identify very, very similar issues, like a barrier might be the way we communicate with each other. A barrier might be the way we go about resolving conflict. A barrier might be personalizing issues when we get into conflict. You know, those are just examples. And people often see the very same barriers, even if they're looking at them from different perspectives. So then when we get together, what I would do is identify, here's what you told me you'd like to see. So we'll start with what the vision is. So what is our vision for working together effectively and serving the people of Manzanita? And then I'll talk a little bit about, here's what you told me about where we are. Again, in a high-level form, no specific examples given. But these are the issues that I was told that we need to sort of really take stock of and address in a, you know, straightforward and authentic way. And then let's talk about what the, you know, how are we going to approach those barriers? How are we going to actually move through them so we can get to where we want to go? So in my experience, when people come to this work in an open-minded and open-hearted way, we can do so very much. Because if everyone is willing to say, you know, I can see that I am not perfect in all ways, and sometimes I make mistakes too. If everyone does that, then we're really going to be quite successful. I've never had a situation where you weren't successful, where people were able to do that. So approaching it with humility for our own, you know, about our own selves, recognition that nobody is perfect. Everybody is doing their best and attempting to serve, you know, according to their own lights. And then figuring out how are we going to work together so that we can, we can get the work done? You know, and I, Linda mentioned compassion in her opening statement. I do, I do rely quite a bit on sort of helping people get back in touch with their, you know, with the goodwill that they often have for people. You know, sometimes it can get dissipated in conflict, but if we can get back in touch with that, we can do, we can accomplish quite a bit. So one of the things that I know is that when people get into conflict, they, they can get into a place of using their threat defense system. So their emotion regulation system of threat defense, instead of being able to be, stay connected even when in conflict. So when I refer to threat defense, what I'm referring to is, I don't see a lot of faces, so I usually would ask, has anybody ever had this experience? But if you're, you know, if you're in conflict with somebody and then all of a sudden you notice your heart's racing and your breath is shallow and your palms are, you know, palms are sweaty, or something like that. Everybody has a different reaction. So what's happening is we're actually in a fight or flight state, and we're producing hormones that take all the blood away from our brain and we can no longer think clearly. So one of the, one of the things that's really important is to help people approach conflict in a way where they're centered and balanced and open. So that, you know, that could be something that we work on. That's, that's often true in a, in a group, but you know, I don't know yet because I haven't talked to each of you individually. But that's an example of the kind of thing that we might have on our list is how do we want to be when we're actually having conflict? Because you're elected officials. You are going to have conflict. That's just a reality. So the question is, how do you want to have it? How do you want to actually make it happen so that you can work effectively for the citizens? So that's just an example. Every group facilitation is, you know, there are things that every group has in common with every other group that has conflict or glitches, and there are things that are completely unique. And as I'm working with the group, you know, there may be, I try to be very flexible and address what comes up. So there may be some things that happened that I'm not covering right now. For example, you know, I might, I have in the past realized that I needed to give feedback to one or more members of a group and, you know, let them know how they were impacting other people because they just weren't aware of it, you know? That can happen. Some other things might happen as well. So it just all depends on what you tell me. And when we get together in the retreat, we'll go over all of this. And I typically will work in, like, if I can see that, for example, communication style is an issue, I'll work in some training on that and we'll talk about it. And we'll kind of come to some conclusions about it. And then you might, at the end of the day, an example of what might come out of this is a set of guidelines or ground rules or agreements, however you want to describe it, that you as a council decide, we're going to, we're going to operate by this moving forward. And it becomes something that you use. You might even read it out loud in every council meeting. People, there are some councils who do that, where they say, this is the way we operate. This is the way we will treat each other. You know, and then they open the meeting. So that's an example of an outcome that could come, come from this. I'm going to stop talking and give you a chance to ask me questions or bring things up or cover anything you want.
Thank you, Jill. I had a question. Timeline. I know that, that you probably have the initial meetings with all of us and, and then there's group meetings and then I think you also mentioned at one point when we talked that there's the possibility of doing a follow-up session as well. So what do you foresee as a, as a time factor here?
So my hope is that we'll be able to have our retreat by, by the end of August. So I, I'm going on vacation next week and then I, I'm hoping that I can start setting up meetings with you individually and that we can set on a day that will happen so that we can have our retreat within August. In terms of follow-up meetings, that's an example of the flexible process. So you as a group might decide, Jill, we'd like you to come back and spend an afternoon with us in two or three months. You might say, goodbye. You've been great. See you later. It all depends on what you'd like. So, so we'll just, you know, we'll figure all of that out. But, but in terms of your question, I'm hoping we can get the retreat. In fact, I'd love to be able to set a day and then we have a deadline to work to.
Other questions?
Yes, so Jill, there's a lot of interest in the community about the challenge that you're hoping to help us with. And in fact, I've been hearing from several people lately who hope that the group facilitation is done in public. So what are your thoughts and feelings on that and any particular suggestions you have about how we should proceed? Knowing that it's not just a matter of curiosity on the public's part, I think the public's active participation to some extent in the dynamics has increased the level of challenge. So what do you think?
Well, I mean, there's always an upside and a downside. If, if you as a council decide that you think the public interest is better served by having it be public, I have no problem doing that. I think the downside is that individuals could feel reluctant to voice their actual problems, concerns, and issues with each other because they wouldn't like to make all of that public. So it could be that people then edit themselves and we don't get all the real issues on the table. That could happen. So, you know, it sort of depends. Yeah, sort of depends.
So on that, on that second point, is your one-on-one process before the group meeting, is that designed to help reach some of those issues if they're not coming out organically?
It is. It is. That is exactly what it's for. Anything that absolutely needs to be said, I will say it essentially in a way that doesn't call out any one person. And in a group facilitation, when that's happening, when there's no public, you know, observation, typically what happens is then we go into a dialogue or, you know, a conversation about, about it in a real way. You know, what's happening? Why is it happening? How is it impacting other people? Can we be really honest about, you know, what people are bringing to this and how are we going to do this differently? And sometimes people have to accept responsibility and accountability and say, I made a mistake. That can be hard. That can be hard. So, you know, it all depends. It can be hard, you know, if, if it ends up being in a public eye and then that one sentence gets taken out of context and all of that would be things that I would be a little worried about because people might be reluctant then to share openly. That would be my concern, Jerry. But, you know, like I said, we can do this in a public, if that, if you as a council decide it is in the public interest, we can do it.
Can you, do you have any examples of working with a elected body and with, I don't know if their dynamics would be similar to ours, but certainly if you're involved, they have some kind of discord, dysfunction. So have you had experience with councils?
I have worked with some county councils and some city councils, yeah.
Do you ever find an issue that's unresolvable?
I mean, always, there's always going to be some issue that's unresolvable. In my experience, most everything is workable. Almost everything is workable. The only times where it is, you just can't get past something is, is when you actually have some, somebody who just will not say, they will not agree that they did something that everybody in the group is saying, yeah, you did it and we saw you and we can't have that kind of behavior anymore. And the person's like, never happened. I mean, in that kind of situation, you keep, it's hard to move forward, right? However, usually there's a way to say, at least to say, okay, well, recognizing we have a difference of opinion on what happened here, can we agree moving forward? How do we want to behave in a situation like this? So it can be a little hard. But, you know, the reality is every single person has their own perspective and their own, you know, filters, their own history, their own everything. And you and I might see the very same thing and you come away with one impression of what happened and I come away with a totally different impression of what happened. That doesn't mean either of us is not telling the truth. It just means we have a different perspective. So sometimes we have to say, okay, you know, maybe we're not going to get to a resolution here on what happened. But moving forward, what do we want to do? And then everybody needs to agree to do things the way the agreement is and stick to it moving forward.
In terms of your private conversations with each of us, will you, do you think, based on your history, that you would be able to come out of those discussions with a recommendation about whether it should be public or private? I mean, I can see the benefit. The, the, the community, I believe, is really interested in this process. And they've said so. And, and I honor that. At the same time, I, I have the same concerns you do and that is, are indicated, and that is often in public situations, you're much more cautious, particularly when it's an emotional issue or, or a specific issue that's been difficult to deal with. So would you be able to give us a recommendation after that? Or is that based on what we think is best for the city?
I will certainly know a whole lot more after I talk to each of you individually. And I think, I think, if you, yeah, I would be able to do that.
That would be, that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Brad, do you have any questions?
Are you there, Brad?
I don't really have any questions. I have to admit, I'm a little embarrassed and disappointed that we're at this juncture. Even though we did discuss it back in whenever, December, that we might have this follow-up. I, I can see the value of the work that you do, Jill. But, well, I'll try to be optimistic, but I have some reservations about about our potential success. So I know it's not a question, it's a comment, but that's what I guess.
Well, thank you, Brad. I appreciate that. Jenna?
Not you. I have no additional questions. I look forward to starting this process. I really couldn't come soon enough.
So Jill, when you talk about timeframe, are you going, so we're talking about potentially the end of August, and I, I think it would be a good idea to set dates as soon as we get some additional data. Would you be able to talk to each of us prior to the start, to say the end of August, so that that would be a productive start or would?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you wouldn't?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I think what we ought to do is set a time that the retreat's going to happen this date, and I get my conversations with you done before then so that I, because what I will do, I'll need like a little bit of time to prepare after the end of those conversations and before the retreat because I'll be developing a PowerPoint for you. I'm going to be putting together what I think is important for us to talk about, really thinking about the agenda, thinking about, you know, maybe, maybe there's some conflict resolution conversations that we need to have about what the process should be like. And if that happens, then I would want to share with you some, some options. And I'd like to present some, you know, here's some problem-solving ways that, here's some escalation processes. Here's some ways you can go about getting things done, you know, so that you have a way to do that. So I'd want some time to put all of that together. But I think we should, you know, I can send you an email today with some potential dates. That would work for me, yeah.
And in terms of public versus non-public, by the time you send us the dates, you'd have some idea about what your recommendation would be. And you would need to talk about that in public, about what that would be.
Yeah, I'd be happy to write you something that says what, what I think. Remember, a process like this is about developing trust. That's the fundamental bottom line. You can disagree with somebody and still trust them. You can have a totally different perspective than somebody else does and still trust that they are honest and have integrity and they're trying to do the right thing. So if, if I perceive that having this be open could impact that ability to develop trust amongst the council, I would be really concerned about and then, and suggest not doing it publicly. But we'll see. After I talk with all of you, we'll see. We'll explore that.
All right. That sounds great. Any other?
Just to be clear, this will also include our city manager as well?
Yes, that is the intention. I saw her face briefly, but I don't see her now.
Is there anyone else? She's there.
Jill, is there anyone else that would be included?
The only people I've been, I have been identified to me are the members of the council, the mayor, and the city manager.
Okay. Well, if you would send us those dates, I'll get it out to the rest of the council and we'll select a time and report.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself to all of you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Bye-bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion about the planning commission and the scope and a, and a discussion about possible bylaws. There are two primary branches that support council decisions, and that's the Budget Committee, usually based on financial policies, and the Planning Commission. Currently, Manzanita has an ordinance, number 66, relating to the Planning Commission, and it provides for, if you bear with me, I'll just read these things that are included in that ordinance. It has seven members. It says, appointed by the mayor, terms of four years, vacancy filled by mayor for unexpired portion of term removal if three meetings are missed unexcused. A president and vice president are elected. A secretary is elected or appointed, and it does not need to be a member of the commission. Four members on the Planning Commission constitutes a quorum. They meet at least once a month, may enjoy, employ, I'm sorry, consulting advice on municipal problems. They shall control subdivision of land, make recommendations to the city council regarding land use, location of thoroughfares, public buildings, parks, and other facilities, and regarding any other matter relating to planning and development of the city and surrounding area. The commission may make studies, hold hearings, and make recommendations at the request of the city council. All recommendations made by the city council shall begin writing. The difference between an ordinance and a bylaw, an ordinance is a legislative act that forbids or restricts activity. Once adopted, they become legally enforceable, local laws. A bylaw is a course of action. So one is legislative and one is action. That provides consistency and continuity in making decisions to ensure predictability. We've talked a lot about loopholes, definitions that are missing that get in the way of some decisions. So my hope is that the council and the planning commission can find a partnership to expand their scope and also to perhaps see the value of adopting bylaws for their commission. Some of the things that could be employed in a bylaw discussion, often you find, following the Roberts Rules of Orders for the meeting format, several bylaws that I've looked at have a statement about no commission member may vote on any subject in which he or she has a direct financial interest. Recommended by the League of Oregon Cities is a annual work plan that includes long-range planning and goals. Earlier this year, I talked with one of the planning commissioners who's been there for a while and, and there was a concern about getting clear direction from the city council to the planning commission that goes out five, 10, I'm sorry, 10, 15, or 20 years. And several cities have, as short-term rentals become a larger issue, several communities and cities have adopted the STR committee reporting to the planning commission. The League of Oregon Cities also recommends giving voice to community values and commitment to socially and environmentally responsible uses of its resources reconnected in the COT plan. And we know we're, talked about updating that. The planning commission should be a driving force there. And I know when I chatted with Karen at one point, she, she felt that there were several items in the COT plan that the planning commission would be able to recommend moving forward. According to the League of Oregon Cities, the commission bylaws should specify the number of non-residents, second homeowners or UGB, and also the number of developers and real estate agents that are on the planning commission. I think in several cities I saw where that was limited to two out of seven. There's also in the bylaws, often an orientation on how new members are trained. Generally, that's the responsibility of the chairperson or this, and with the city manager. The chairperson may appoint commission members to specific projects or committees. For example, the development of ad hoc committees. One possible idea is to look at system development charges before we do development approvals, before the planning commission does development approvals. And also to review city commission goals annually for establishment of goals that enhance and align enhance and align those of the city council. We're running into definitions, dwelling units, hotels, bed and breakfast, ADUs, STRs, and, and how do we, how do we close those loopholes? Curious to hear what others are thinking. I know I've talked with one counselor who sort of likes things the way they are, and, and perhaps this is pie in the sky, that I'm curious, this is a work session and it's a time to get things out on the table. So any comments?
I, my, my first reaction is that you're, you're certainly talking about a lot of interesting ideas, many of which have been discussed previously and, and by other councils. I'm not sure I understand they, that they all would be bylaw issues, but that, maybe that's beside the point. So I, since, since we were sort of told that the specific request was to consider bylaws, maybe we could focus on that. And, and then some of these other items, I mean, if, if we're going to expand the scope of the Planning Commission, I assume that would be a council decision, a policy decision by council. Wouldn't be something that, that Planning Commission would do via their own bylaws.
Right.
So I, so I'd just like to make sure that we focus first on the issue of bylaws, which I guess I'm, I can't imagine a set of bylaws being a detriment, but I'm not sure there, I, I guess I would be curious what specific problem are they solving that currently exists? And I think you have some thoughts, clearly. Do you have some ideas that specifically are not addressed already in the in the ordinance? But then, on the other hand, some of what you, you brought up, I believe are, is addressed by state law. For example, the limitations on a number of developers or realtors that can be on a Planning Commission. I'm pretty sure that's a provision of state law. Doesn't hurt to repeat it in our ordinance or in our bylaws, if we have bylaws, but bottom line is, I, I guess I want to make sure we, first and foremost, we're solving a problem that exists. If, if a problem exists and we can solve it with bylaws, let's do so. And in, in that regard, I, is Karen here? Is Karen?
Yeah, Karen, Karen is here.
Okay. I mean, I know we don't take public comment, but in this case, we're talking about the chair of the Planning Commission, and we're proposing to this, well, we're, we're discussing potential bylaws for the Planning Commission. So I think it might be good to hear from Karen on that point. Or other members of the commission. But I, I mean, obviously, there's a lot here, and, and a lot of it exceeds bylaws, per se. And so I want to make sure that we have a good discussion on that particular issue, and then maybe, maybe we have another work session or two on some of these other issues.
So Jerry, I totally agree with you, and I'm, I'm wondering if we could identify just the issues that are bylaw issues, like a number of the issues wouldn't fall under the bylaws. So if we could maybe get, if you could enter, if you could identify the, the bylaw issues, that way Karen could focus on them, and we could focus on the bylaw issues.
Karen, are, are you there?
She's here.
Can, can I ask you, because we've talked about bylaws a little bit quite a while ago, but I gave you a, a couple of copies to look over. And some of the things that seem to be problematic were, for example, definitions. And some of the more, you know, it's, it's clearly laid out what the ordinance covers, but there are the other pieces is what you're asking for, Linda. But I'm, I'm curious if Karen is, is open to the need for bylaws for the commission? Or can you answer that, Karen?
Sure. I think that the, it just, I, I think that the Planning Commission operates pretty well already. Most of what I think would be in bylaws is covered by our ordinance 66 that establishes the Planning Commission. We have a tremendous amount of work ahead of us this year already, between ongoing developments in the city and the need to begin work on our comprehensive plan. And I, I guess I agree. I'm not sure what's missing, and it would really help to know what you think is missing from the way the Planning Commission is structured. So I, I guess that's, that's where I, that's where I land.
I, I see long-term goals for the city, 10, 15, 20 years out. I see definitions. There's some ordinances that we have, for example, on the STR nightlights. STRs have to have very specific outdoor lighting, and yet the neighbors, if it's not an STR, don't have to comply with that. Trying to get some predictability and some unity in, in some of those expectations, I, I, I see as a goal for looking at what we're doing and trying to tweak it to make things a little bit better. Definitions has always been an issue.
I, I'm, I'll just chime in. I was on the Planning Commission for two years prior to City Council. I guess I'm just looking at my notes for, for bylaws. I, I agree with Karen that it's, it's covered in our, in the ordinance pretty well. It's also stated, I can't pull it off the top of my head, that there are rules around number of developers, realtors, that should be on the commission. Those are questions that we ask when doing interviews for Planning Commission appointments. Karen does a great job with Roberts Rules. An initial question right off the bat with planning is, is there any bias expertise context that covers those items? I, I do think Karen does a, a great job leading the discussion. I think the other items, the definition, night skylight, those, those are items that are coming in our comprehensive plan, and we have done extensive outreach to that. And there will be an RFP going out to completely update our, our comprehensive plan in the next few years. After that, I think it's great that the Planning Commission can jump in and do those spot changes, but right now, we need a, a full overhaul, and that is on our agenda as council. And, and we've decided as a, as council to move forward with that. And like, like Karen said, they have a lot on their plate coming down the pipeline, especially working on that comprehensive plan. I think it's great to look at, look at these items. I'm not sure that right now is the right time. I know that we all, as individual council members, have items that we want, items and goals that we want to look at. I think that would be a great conversation to have, like, one at a facilitated meeting, or, you know, as a group meeting to go over our goals again and establish, like, you know, we have our big items that we're working on, and we have a capital improvement plan now as well. What are the little, I would see this as like a housekeeping item. You've brought up other housekeeping items of policies for the Budget Committee. Leila's pointed out, Leila has an extensive list of, of housekeeping items that need to be updated. I'm not sure that this, that this is an important one, but maybe not a priority at the moment.
Well, I, I do want to reiterate that I have nothing but admiration when I sit through a Planning Commission meeting and I watch Karen at the helm there. She is a master of meetings and moves through a lot of information, difficult information, issues that many people are quite passionate about, and she does it with great skill and compassion. I'm not looking to throw one more thing on her plate. I'm actually looking for ways to support the Planning Commission, to make sure that they have what they need from the council. And I'm opening the door for the council and the Planning Commission chairman to say, this is what you could do that would help us along. I'm just, in, in six months, I haven't been party to one of those discussions. Maybe they're happening elsewhere, but if there's something that we can do for the tremendous job that the Planning Commission does, I'd like to get it out on the table and see if we can address it.
Well, as an example, I think at the last Planning Commission meeting, a Planning Commission member expressed clear frustration with councils in the past not having addressed some things through ordinance changes that this council, this particular commission member would have wanted to see done. And that's exactly sort of underscoring the relationship between the Planning Commission and the city council. The Planning Commission has to apply ordinances that have to be passed in the first instance by the city council. So I think that, you know, you've mentioned definitions a lot, and that's clearly a source of concern and tension on a couple of issues in town. And so clearly, yes, we do have to do some work, probably on the backside of the comp plan revisions, but we do have to do some work to, to make additions and amendments to the zoning ordinance, which would probably include some definition updates. So, yeah, there's no question that, that there's a role for council to play to make life easier for the Planning Commission. I'm just not sure it, it comes in a form of bylaws. But on the other hand, again, the bylaws, you know, maybe it's a red herring. I mean, the bylaws is, there's a lot more on this paper that you read from than the mere suggestion that the Planning Commission have bylaws. And I think, you know, the dark sky thing, for example, I'm pretty sure that's teed up for consideration in, in the very near future, which is good. And, and council has expressed a desire for a while to move forward on that. So I do think, you know, one of the things that happens on a regular basis is policy ideas are floated, the implementation issues that might make some policy choices smarter or more timely than others rise to the surface. And, and when there's an opportunity to move forward on a policy change without implementation challenges or difficulties, council can do so. And so it may be that the hiring of the new code enforcement person, once that person is onboard and uploaded, ready to go, we might be more confident in making some policy changes because we know that we're not just writing ordinances, but we're writing ordinances that can be effectively enforced. So it's a good conversation. I'm glad we're having it, but I am I'm not sure about the, the bylaw approach itself. I guess if Karen was here telling us, we need some bylaws because the Planning Commission's not working effectively, that'd be, that'd be worth talking about. On the other hand, if she, if Karen needed bylaws, I suspect she would initiate that conversation with her commission without our direction. One thing you got here that is intriguing to me is the annual work plan, and I do wonder about that. Karen, if you're still with us, could you, do you guys have a, an annual work plan, or, or is that something you've talked about in the past?
Um, we, we really don't have a specific annual work plan. A lot of our work is wholly dependent on development in the city.
Right.
You know, what other people decide to do with their property affects how, you know, what our work plan looks like. Clearly, we've needed code updates, you know, the zoning code, or I guess we should call it zoning ordinance, has needed updating for quite some time. The comp plan has needed updating for quite some time. And if we had had those items scheduled out on a work plan basis, we wouldn't be in the fix that we're in right now. But the city's changed a lot in the last 10, 15 years, as far as the number of people that are in town, the kinds of properties, uses people are putting their properties to, and the kinds of questions that people are asking about what we can do next, or what we should be doing now. So I, I don't see that, me, the bylaws are, set up rules for engagement. And at this moment, I don't think the rules for engagement are under question, unless somebody wanted to bring up specific items like term limits or it, I'm just reading through, I don't see that we have anything that describes how many people of varying occupations can be on the, can be on the Planning Commission. That's not in our ordinance, but I think we've done a pretty good job of making sure that people that have a serious conflicts of interest or potential conflicts of interest do not get invited to the Planning Commission in the first place, so that we have a full complement of commissioners who are able to speak and hear and listen to all of our items that need to be adjudicated. So I, I'm, I, I mean, it doesn't hurt to review things, certainly.
Yeah. Let me ask you about the, the role that the Planning Commission has played to date on the ADU issue, because that, I think, if I understand it correctly, that, that's an example of a policy area you guys spent some time on, even though it wasn't in direct response to a development application. So I realize that, I realize that most of your work is driven by applications, and that, that puts you in a position of being a very reactive or responsive body. But the ADU thing was more, you was, you going on offense and being more proactive, and, and I understood that to be, you know, an interesting undertaking that, that commission members at the time were pretty enthused about. Can I, can you just refresh us on how that all happened?
Yeah, I can. The state law required that communities, if I can remember correctly exactly how it, how the law was stated, but that in unincorporated areas in counties with a certain number of people in population, were required to include ADUs in unincorporated areas. And so we started to work on the ADU process. We came up with some pretty good ideas for it. It would only apply to the unincorporated parts of the city, you know, those that are in the urban growth boundary. But then it, we ended up not pursuing, getting it all the way to implemented as part of the zoning ordinance, because it's so costly and so expensive and so time-consuming to adopt changes to the zoning ordinance. And so we, we've got the work done, we just didn't complete it. And it's, we kept saying, well, there are so many other things that we need to change. We need to do it more all at once. And, and so when I first started on the Planning Commission, that's kind of how we did it. We save up three or four different issues and figure out the way that they should be implemented and crafted language to include in the zoning ordinance. And then maybe two years, up to two years later down the road, we requested that the council adopted all as part of one package, so that we're not looking at each paragraph in the zoning ordinance and changing each paragraph or, you know, every other paragraph. And, you know, I regret that we didn't get that included, and I wish that we had, had pushed harder to include ADUs throughout the city. We could be doing a lot more toward affordable housing or workforce housing if we had that capability now.
And Karen, do you see that ADU particular, no, Jenna's done a lot of work on that as well. Do you know if that would be part of the kind of early comprehensive plan updates? I know we've talked about taking certain sections and really working on those sections. Updates, I know we've talked about taking certain sections and really working on those sections. Do you see that as a possibility?
Well, I do, um, but the housing overall, the housing goal needs to be addressed overall um, in the comprehensive plan. And, and that certainly is a significant. A significant piece of how we address the housing issue. So yeah, I, I do see that going forward and, and I'm hoping that housing is one of the first goals that we can, that we can begin working on.
Uh, one other question, so the big issue that has been kind of the elephant in the middle of the room. Is the definition of a hotel. Um, now unfortunately, we can't look in the past and say we wish we had. But whose responsibility is it now to help come up with a definition of a hotel? And what is that, would that also be something that would be just an automatic inclusion in the comprehensive plan? Or is that something that we should deal with right now?
It definitely would need to be part of. I believe our zoning ordinance should define what kind of businesses can be in a place and what those businesses. Need to look like, I mean, we did um, did a pretty good job defining a brew pub. Several years ago and um, you know, got, got that definition and as part of a series of other. Um, changes that we were implementing, but yeah, that's definitely needs to be part of the, part of the ordinance. Uh, I don't think definitions belong in the comprehensive plan, that's more of a larger scope document, but. It, it's really up to um, the council. How important, what kind of importance you want to place on things like that, because it takes staff time to prepare. Um, to re- review what we have now and. Try to help us, guide us through the kinds of public hearings we would need to have in order to. Create language that addresses that kind of an issue. Um, and then once the planning commission has had public hearings uh, on it. And we come up with language that we believe is going to be successful, then we take that. To the council and you need to have your series of hearings on it and um, your input goes into it. So when, it's, it's a tremendous amount of work to change a word or a paragraph. In the zoning ordinance and it, I hate to start thinking about doing. And this is the problem we've had, it's such a big problem that we need to address. That we look at each little piece of it and we don't want to do it piecemeal, we want to do it. And I think Leila's got a good um, plan for us to do that. Um, I think she's working on um, a potential RFP for consultants who can help us. Really um, streamline the process of starting the. Um, comprehensive plan. Implementing, you know, the ordinance that will implement the comprehensive plan would be the new zoning ordinance.
Well, based on your comment about staff uh, requirements, I was going to ask Leila. What her view of that would be and I'm assuming she was probably going to tell us that anyway.
Thank you for asking, um. And I wanted to get back to, thank you Karen, um, for your, your comments. Um, Karen and I actually met for quite a while on Friday and are going to start establishing monthly check-ins. To develop a work plan. Um, since the time I've been here, um, and in my previous roles as a community development director. That was sort of par for the course, uh, much like the council sets. Um, goals every year which effectively establish the work plan for the city. Uh, planning commissions also do that. And the, it's been a matter of capacity and balancing other priorities. I had a staff of twelve in community development, I have a staff of one, which is me pretty much. When it comes to long range planning. Uh, with respect to that, um. The planning commission's past role, we, since I've been here, really has been reacted to land use applications. The council's goal to update the comprehensive plan will really be. In large part, up until the adoption process. Under the purview of the planning commission, so what Karen and I sat down and did is sort of sketched out. Sort of a rough what the next six months look like to get a consultant onboard. Um, I want to echo and appreciate Karen's thoughtful response with respect to code amendments. Um, code amendments are not something you can just do. Uh, they do take quite a bit of effort and time, um, we will actually be going through. A series of code amendments, uh, if the city council adopts the transportation system plan and text amendments to goal twelve. Of the comprehensive plan. And the planning commission will be working through those code amendments. We actually already have them drafted, they were done as part of. The comp plan, um, I'm sorry, as part of the TSP. Um. What is most efficient and I think, and I agree with Karen a hundred percent, that. There are so many issues. And many of them are, you know, dune grading, I think is an excellent example. Are out of step with what at least. Community feedback has been so far is out of step with the community, but it is currently. Um, a goal of the comp plan is to allow dune grading. So it's incongruent with where we are with the community. So we can't go in and just change the zoning ordinance, we have to, there's sort of a, a series of steps. Have to occur, and the first thing is we have to get our policies up to date. And aligned with the community now. So that's what the cop plan update is intended to do, many of the issues that were raised. Through uh, recent. Uh, somewhat contentious applications in the SRR zone. Elevated some issues, I like to look at this as silver lining, is that it identified. Where there are gaps between what's expressed in the comp plan, what the community's. Um. Temperature is on those items and then how that speaks to the zoning ordinance. So we need to start with that, we need to, and to do that and to do it well. Requires community engagement, it's goal one. Of the comprehensive plan and Oregon's land use laws is community engagement. And so we did some of that last year as a way to kind of help inform and provide information to our consultants once we hire them. As a starting point through the town halls, like what the major issues are. But we also have to go out and have real conversations around. The eighteen statewide planning goals, well, it'll be seventeen since we'll have updated hopefully the transportation chapter. And then we start to make amendments to the zoning ordinance. And in many cases, at least in my experience, that could include a pretty massive rewrite of the ordinance itself. And it's a whole lot easier to do that when you've had a robust community engagement process. Of which the planning commission, um, one of the policies in the current comprehensive plan is the planning commission is. The committee for citizen involvement, so they oversee the, um, they will be asked. Opine on the community outreach plan that the consultants come up with and. Provide feedback so that the outreach is reflective of what the CCI's role is in terms of getting that community involvement. We execute that involvement and we draft policies and the planning commission is responsible for. Being cited the first stop in evaluating those policies, providing feedback to the team on those, revising those policies. We do that until the planning commission signs off on those policies and then it goes to city council. And then we also have to go through the DLCD process, we'll get a little practice with the TSP, so I kind of. Invite you and also members of the community to pay attention to that process, because that process is really. What we'll be going through to update the comp plan. And then, once that's done, and we can also do some of this work concurrently, because there is some measure of urgency behind some of these issues. I would say particularly for dune grading, for goal two, which is land use, which affects um. All the zones in the city. And then, as we know from talking in our last city council meeting, um. Senate Bill four oh six, the applicability now of Oregon's middle housing, we're statutorily required to update. Our housing code, which will include ADUs, ADUs are a required component of HB two thousand and one. So if we had done this kind of piecemeal, then we'd be going back and doing more stuff again, so there's, it's. It's, it's volume versus uh, like. A text amendment to address a definition. Goes through the same process as. An overhaul of the residential code, for example, or I'm sorry, here it's an ordinance, I refer to code often because that's one of the names too, but. So, part of what we need to do is kind of understand that process. So one of the things that Karen and I are working on is a schedule for the rest of the year for the planning commission. I'm afraid we're likely not to cancel any meetings, there's going to be a lot of work done, um, we're proposing, um. A joint, I had planned to do this in January, but because we didn't have a full city council, I mean, sorry, a full planning commission. Um, we didn't do that joint meeting with uh, Brett Esses from DLCD to do a comp plan one oh one. So I'm proposing to do that in August, at the August meeting, that to invite city council to participate in that meeting. And kick this thing off. And so what we will do is develop a schedule for the RFP, you know, I'm anticipating that to go out in September, October. Get it hopefully a consultant onboard by December and then we kick this process off in January. Part of that scope of work is actually going to include, as you know, last week I requested your support to apply for a technical assistance grant. To help with the housing code, um, the housing amendments to our ordinance, um, residential. Uh, land is the majority, the lion's share of the property in Mansamita. So that alone will cover a significant amount of the. Um, area within our city. And then I think prioritizing goal two, which is land use, which will address things like the SRR zone. Um, get clarity around what those goals for that zone should be. And then that sets the foundation for how we can make code amendments to reflect those updated values. Um, and those two items I'm intending to include in the RFP. So that they can happen somewhat concurrently, so we don't have to get to the end of the full comp plan update. We can update the housing chapter, the land use chapter, we can actually start to make traps on those code amendments. Um, quicker than if we waited, so that's my dream. Um, and what I intend to, and I'm actually drafting the RFP now. Will reflect that, and so Karen and I discussed all that and we're starting to chart out. Um, the TSP adoption, which will be a change to goal ten, updating of goal ten. Think this will be a good sort of practice session, it's not practice, it's real life, but getting planning commission. And the community to understand how this process works, so by the time that. Um, those policies and those code amendments, sorry, the zoning ordinance amendments come to you. They will have been thoroughly vetted by the planning commission. You will have an opportunity, you will hold a public hearing per state law, get additional feedback you may, request staff. Make those changes, and so that's a place where, say. We will, but say we didn't, we being the planning commission staff and the consultant, address the definition of hotel. You can tell us then, hey, you didn't get it. We want you to revise this, so there's an opportunity for council to directly weigh in on that. And then, once you're satisfied, then that's when the plan itself gets adopted, um. The robust community engagement is essential for the plan's success. I don't know what kind of engagement we went through thirty years ago, um, but in my experience and just. For the record, you know, I have a master's degree in regional planning. I learned from the best urban planner, um, comprehensive planner in, in the country, really, John Frigadesi. Um, I have a lot of experience with comp plans. And the one thing I know is that a good comp plan is only as good as the input that is given by the community. Because it's our job to reflect those values in the policies and then to translate them effectively into the ordinance. And so that's, that's kind of where it's at. And so a number of the issues that I read or heard today too, will be addressed in there. Um, and if we miss something, there are numbers of checks and balances throughout the process. That will enable the community, the planning commission, and ultimately the city council. To weigh in, influence and affect that. And at the end of this, we will have, I think, a comp plan that's reflective of where we are today. Setting the stage for where we want to be in twenty years. But one thing that we'll do differently this time is we do what I call periodic review. Where part of the planning commission's workload is to assess. The comp plan every three to five years. And is this still relevant with where we are? And we can then start to make what I call housekeeping amendments, because if you can get the code leveled up. To where we are today and the policies, it makes those kinds of amendments a lot easier. And um, when I was in Milwaukee, we did an annual housekeeping amendment process where we would work with city. I'm sorry, the planning commission to address kind of, because when you start implementing, um, when you start. You have a new uh, zoning ordinance in place and then you have development for the first time, we learn a lot from that. We learn, oh, this worked, it went really smoothly, we got everything we wanted, or we're like, ooh. We missed on this piece, and so we know that, and then we come back and we work through again that whole process. So I'll stop there, but I just, I feel like that that's, that sort of process is really important to understand. Um, because code amendments aren't overnight, they take months and sometimes years to, to get done. And so if we can do it in an efficient way, that's based on. Community input and feedback, we're going to be a lot more successful in charting not only the growth that we expect now. But what we want in the future.
Uh, Leila, thank you for the, for bringing us up to speed, um, you, you answered a lot of questions about where we are with certain pieces. Um, and it, it sounds like a overwhelming uh, task ahead. Of both the council and, and the planning commission and particularly the staff. Um, I'm curious, uh, and, and I do look forward to the training session with the planning commission. I, I remember that was scheduled back in January and, um, I think it was Jeff Estes that you had lined up, is that?
Right, Estes, yeah.
So, um, perhaps we're, get him back on the calendar?
He's already agreed to it, so if you want to, um, we've had our plates full this week and I wanted to reach out to all of you. Um, mark your calendars for August, I believe it's the twenty first. Four P M, and that'll be via Zoom, obviously, but that will be, um, we also have one other item I'm confirming right now. That I think will be of interest to the council as well.
Okay.
Um, but he'll go over the cop plan one oh one uh, process for folks and then be available to ask, answer questions.
Great, that, that would be great, and then, um.
Second, Leila, do you have a time for that meeting on the twenty?
It'll be the planning commission's regularly scheduled time, which is four P M.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then I have a, a sort of a final question, I guess, for Karen, is, is there something that. You would like to have from uh, the council that um, has fallen through the cracks or that. Uh, would, would help uh, facilitate the massive job that you have ahead of you?
Um, well, actually, I, I think you've already done it, um, you've. Um, you've, first of all, um, filled the planning commission with really good, serious, thoughtful. People who have great ideas and who are determined to work together, um, and who love the city. And want nothing but the best for the city, so that's the first thing, um, is we've got a really good um, planning commission. So I appreciate that and thank you for um. That, um, it, it's a fairly new commission, so we might um, take a little bit of extra time getting, um, getting our feet wet. And with all of this. But the second thing that you've done, I think that is really valuable, is that you've hired a, um, a really good city manager. And who is goal oriented and um, thinks ahead. And that's something that, um, you know, our planning commission has not had in a while. We've been, I think, I think Deb, you said the word reactive, or maybe it was Jerry, that we've um, largely been. I think, I think Deb, you said the word reactive, or maybe it was Jerry, that we've um largely been reactive and um, I'm really looking forward to being proactive. I think the other thing that I can't give you credit for is, but I'm just gonna say it anyway, is that we have a really remarkable population in this city of people who are dedicated, committed, thoughtful, love it and want nothing but the best for how we um move forward. And so I think with the combination of you know, uh, the complement of, of resources that we have, I, I can't think of anything more other than grow whatever money Leila needs at a good consultant to streamline this process for it.
Do you feel that you've had uh enough training opportunities for your commission? The, particularly, you've got quite, had quite a turnover this year.
Um, no, we have not. And I, I would agree that I think it would be really helpful to have um some additional um coursework. I haven't investigated any um, to, to see if there are some things um that we can do to bring the rest of the commission up to speed. Um, so I, I, if, if you know of anything, please pass it along. We'd love to get, um, like I said, we're gonna have to get our feet wet pretty fast. So anything that we can do to bring, yeah, into the process would be great.
Okay.
I think all the commissioners that were new um did take a, I think the league held a planning commissioner kind of one oh one training. And I think almost, I think everyone took that. Um, the con plan one oh one was supposed to be part of that training package, which has got um, delayed uh until we had a full commission. And then one of the other things staff has done is we created an onboarding package for new commissioners, which includes you know, all the relevant ordinances, the comprehensive plan, the planning commission um handbook, things of that nature. Um, when Walt Wodowski was on our, as our contract planner, we had also planned a planning commissioner training, which also had to get canceled um due to the um fact we didn't really have many folks, new folks on planning commission. So those are some things that we will um work with our current contract planner on. Um, and I think just learning on the job will be part of the deal too. Where I think the TSP and the goal ten, I'm sorry, goal twelve for the transportation, uh con plan amendment will be a good way to get folks to kind of understand what the, we just have to update all seventeen um of those goals.
So uh, just to be clear, the, these uh um, guidelines um for the new planning commissioners, the Oregon uh planning commissioner handbook, all of those are available or have been given to the new commissioners at this point, or is it something that's still in the works?
No, we gave the commissioners all a packet that included all that information.
Okay, perfect.
Has a full for onboarding materials.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other comments or questions from other counselors? Well, uh Karen, I can't thank you enough. I, I said earlier that I, I sit in in uh planning commission meetings and I, I went to the training also with your new commissioners and um, it's an uh, it's a volunteer position. It's a lot of hours. Um, and very, very intensive and in depth and deals with a lot of emotion. You, you just do a masterful job. So I hope you will reach out. If there's something the council can do to support you, let us know and, and we'll get working on um possible training options for your
Great. And I, if I could just do one little shout out to um the person who mentored me, Owen Nicholson
Oh, yes.
Was the best guide um for helping get me on the right track. So I just wanna get that into the record as well.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here today. Appreciate it. Okay. Um, I think that
I have, yeah, I have an announcement uh to kind of clarify my council announcement about the conversations with counselors. We're, we're going to be uh uh doing the conversations with counselors focused on the short term rental. We're kind of using the same uh procedure that we used before uh in terms of sign up on the website. But we're not asking you to print any tickets. So if you, but we really do want limited to fifteen people. So it's a safe and an environment that everybody feels that they can speak up. Um, it was supposed to be on the website today and I think it will probably be on the website. Is it on? Oh, yay. Okay, alright. It's on the website and there, the thing that's really interesting about it is uh thanks to some real diligent work from the short term committee. Uh, they have uh links to all of the, the quantifiable data, uh, the qualitative data. Uh, you, you can see the whole survey that was done. Um, so there's lots of information on the links, on the uh information to, for uh the conversation with counselors around short term rentals. I really recommend you look at some of it because that would be really helpful. It would make a much more informed discussion. Uh, we really, we really think the survey was great, but we're really looking for additional comments uh and, and particularly around density uh and, and the cap. Because tho- those are things where the council's gonna need to be making decisions on in the next year or so. So your input would be really helpful. I do have the dates, uh Tuesday, July the eighth, eighteenth at ten o'clock is the first one. So that's next Tuesday. The following one is July the twenty seventh at two P M. And that's a week from thir- from next Thursday. So that's, this is Thursday, right? So it's two weeks. Uh, the rest of them will be on the website and I really encourage you to sign up and we're really interested in getting your input. So um, that would be
How many sessions are there total?
Uh, two, four, six.
Okay.
Sessions.
And, and they will all be at the library, is that correct?
They will all be at the library.
Okay. And there will be two counselors present at each session, is that correct?
That is correct.
And there, and if, if I understand correctly, there's going to be a uh, some sort of an explanation posted on the website that people could read so they understand what the discussion um high points are gonna be.
Well, it's, it is essentially, yes, that's the link I was just talking about. That's, it's on the website now and the links give you the additional data. Uh, that uh hopefully uh will give you, will inform you in terms of what exactly the survey said.
Okay. And are these sixty minutes or ninety minutes or?
They're ninety minutes.
Ninety minutes. And will, um, people, when they sign up, will they know which counselors will be present at which sessions?
No, because there's some, like, there's often some flexibility.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from counselors? Okay, well, I'm still doing Mayor's Mondays at the library also, um, ten thirty to um eleven thirty and uh welcome anyone to drop in for a casual chat. We, I always find those uh sessions so interesting and um, insightful, really. It's a, a chance to uh listen to people and um Jenna or uh Linda often join us, which is greatly appreciated to have, to have one of you there is, is a big help. Um, if I don't hear any other um discussion points, Leila, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Anyone else? Then I think we are ready to adjourn the meeting at three nineteen. And uh, thank you all to the citizens who uh joined us today. There is a another session. Are we gonna start that at four or do you want to just take a ten minute break?
Um, I think unfortunately, I think we should wait till four because that's when it's posted. So members planning to come will be able to join us.
And it's a Zoom also. Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.